We welcome you all to the May 16th Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we have with us Pastor Tom Lancaster from Woodside Bible Church, who will be providing us with an invocation, and then after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pastor, will you come forward?
Okay, if you'd pray with me, please. Father, as we pause now before this council meeting, we thank you that we can acknowledge your presence with us tonight. We have much to be thankful for. We thank you for this wonderful country. We have so many freedoms to enjoy, that we can even stand now and petition the God of the universe for your grace and wisdom for this hour. We thank you. Lord, we thank you for this great city. We have so many things that we love about it. We thank you for our great school system. We thank you for the safety that we enjoy day by day. You've blessed this place, and yet at the same time, we pray for cities around our country that are hurting desperately right now. We pray for those who have been devastated by tornadoes, that the rest of us throughout the country can come and help and restore and bless them. We pray for those whose homes are flooded with water, that, Lord, you'd be gracious to them as well. Lord, we don't want to take your blessings for granted. It's the same time, Lord, tonight, as this city council meets, and it's a budget time. It's a time of challenge, and it's hard to get the funds for what we want and what we need. So, Lord, I pray tonight for the council members, that you'd give them much wisdom, help them to be gracious, help them to know your heart. Lord, I also pray for the folk in the seats behind me. They have great desires, and they have plans, and, Lord, we want to know your plan. We pray that you'd meld these together, that you would be honored, that your wisdom be present, and that we could say this was a meeting that God was there, and he met needs. And that's our prayer tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Lancaster. We appreciate you being here. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howerlech.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
McGuinness.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Forum present. This evening, we begin our meeting with a special recognition, and the first is for Ann Kaminski, and if she will meet me down at the front microphone, I'll present.
On behalf of council.
I'm well. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. Well, this is a sort of a bittersweet recognition for Ann, because, of course, all of us up here, and many out in the community, are truly friends with Ann. And so, it is with great admiration that we present her with this proclamation and do wish her well in her very special calling, that she's going to be helping out with their new granddaughter. Whereas, longtime Troy resident Ann Kaminski has built a solid reputation as the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition for the past nine years, as well as a committed volunteer serving many organizations in our community with an enthusiasm and dedication that is respected by all who know her. And whereas, Ann began her career 38 years ago with the state of Michigan, working for Department of Social Services in Wayne County. As a caseworker, she offered supportive services to adults on public assistance. Her social services work eventually brought her to Highland Park, where she worked for over 23 years in the adult and alternative education arena. And whereas, in 2002, Ann was hired as the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse and the Coalition of Healthy Communities. And whereas, Ann's work in the Troy Community Coalition included developing and implementing prevention strategies based on our community's needs, influencing and promoting community norms to those supporting a lifestyle free from the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs through environmental strategies affecting the total population. And whereas, Ann is one of 28 leader mentors for the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America Institute, Ann provides coalition personal training sessions at CADCA national conferences, and is currently the co-chair of the Prevention Coalition of Southeast Michigan, a member of the Advisory Council for the State Initiative Grant, and chair of the Coalition Workshop. And whereas, as a committed volunteer, Ann has served as the Board Secretary for the Troy Chamber of Commerce, a lifetime member of the Troy Women's Association, and Advisory Board Member of the Michigan Nonprofit Association. She is an Eucharistic minister and a member of the Missions Committee at St. Anastasia Catholic Church. And whereas, one of the most important aspects of Ann's life is her family, including her husband of 42 years, Pat, daughter Jennifer, son-in-law John, and beautiful granddaughter Riley Ann, who are all delighted that she's finally retiring to spend more time and all that talent with her family and care for precious granddaughter Riley. Now therefore, be it known that the City Council of the City of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to Ann Kaminski for her selfless and tireless service and her many contributions to the betterment of the community. Be it further known, the City Council of the City of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the City of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, happiness, and continued success in all future endeavors to Ann during her retirement years. Her influence and contributions will remain alive in our hearts and will impact each of us as we journey into the future. And this is presented the 16th Day of May, 2011, signed by myself and all members of council. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. This is, it's really much nice to be honored when you're alive. It's almost like, you know, it's nice to hear those kind words that everybody says about you. I really don't believe that I've earned all these accolades, because it's not hard to do something you love. I've lived in Troy since 1975 and have loved every single moment of that. I think the only thing that could have pulled me away from being the Executive Director of the Troy Coalition, which is really an outstanding organization, is the birth of our granddaughter, who is just a wonderful little joy. If you're not a grandparent, it's the best thing in life. It's too bad you can't skip the parenting part and just move right into grandparenting, but, you know, that's not possible. But it has been a pleasure working with all of you, elected officials, and those of you in the audience, who have been wonderful and have treated the Coalition and me personally really well, and I appreciate it, and thank you all.
Now, our next proclamation. Steve Burns is here, and he's going to receive this. This is Building Safety Month, May 2011. So, Steve, if you'd come here. Whereas our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building and safety officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians implement the highest quality codes to protect our citizens in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the Building Inspection Department to remind the public about the critical role played by our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our dedicated building and safety officials, who assure safe and efficient and livable buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month 2011 encourages all citizens of Troy to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green and sustainable building, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, citizens are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to us by the Building Inspection and Safety Department in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby proclaim May 2011 as Building Safety Month in the City of Troy, Michigan. Be it further resolved that the City Council calls upon all citizens, community agencies, organizations, and businesses in Troy to encourage all citizens in Troy to learn the appropriate steps that everyone can take to ensure the places we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by the Building Inspection and Safety Department, presented the 16th Day of May, 2011, by myself and all members of council. Steve, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you want to say a few words?
Just wanted to say thanks to the mayor, thanks to council. Been with Troy since July of last year, and with Safe Built and the Building Department, and all of us have had a great experience working with the staff here at the city and the Fire Inspection Department to do a good job, day in and day out, of really looking out, that we are making sure that the buildings here in Troy are as safe as they can be. And I just wanted to say thanks to everybody. Thank you.
Next, in our agenda, there are no carryover items. So, the first item is a public hearing, and this is the adoption of the 2011-12 Annual City Budget and the three-year budget. And with that, I'll ask if there's a presentation from staff before we open the public hearing?
Only questions that you may have, that we'll be happy to answer.
All right. And for those at home and those that are here, you'll see in the agenda all of the detail, and of course, the budget, not only for 2011-12, but also for the three-year budget, is online. And with that, I will open the public hearing, and I see that Thomas Burke signed up to speak on this item, as did Dan Brake. So, I'll call on Thomas Burke first.
I was channel surfing TV this last week, and just stopped on the Troy Channel while I was doing some other things, not paying much attention. And, but then I caught that the questions I was asking about the budget were what was playing. You know, I asked last week about the concessions not being in the budget, and early retirement not being in the budget. I still wasn't paying much attention until my questions started to get answered. And I know with public comment, I don't get an answer. So, I looked up, and I realized it was the budget session, not the council session. And it was Councilman Slater asking the same questions that I asked two hours earlier, when I wasn't there. And he was getting answers from the Assistant City Manager, that yes, the concessions are not in there, because we don't put estimates, or some wording to that in there, and the early retirement benefit is not in there, because we don't put estimates in there. I find that interesting, because the whole budget's an estimate. So, why we wouldn't choose to put estimates in, I think the clarification is, we don't put good estimates in there. We just put the negative estimates in there. But the questions come up is, how much is this? How much is the budget overstated? So, I just thought I'd throw some numbers at it. So, we're looking at concessions of 10% of majority of the wages of the city, and that's the biggest expense. So, we're a total $60 million budget. It's not all wages. Say that's $2 to $4 million bucks. And we're looking at early retirement of 20 to 40 staff. These aren't staff that got hired next, last week. These are people that are experienced on the higher end of the scale. Say they're $100,000 with benefits apiece, $2 to $4 million. You're looking at a total of 48. That could be high, that could be low. But it's not 1% of the budget. That's like an 8 to 12% number. So, I asked myself, what would a business do if they knew, going into their budget sessions, that the potential was there to be off a significant amount? And the answer was, they'd stop talking about it until they got better information. So, why have we spent weeks and weeks talking about a budget that we know will likely, that's overstated, we just don't know how much, but could be as much as 10 or more percent? The answer is, it's not about the budget. It's not about the fact that law requires a budget to be passed, because budget could have been passed in 15 minutes, and then, once the numbers are really known, in a month or so, or once, I guess, the concessions of the police force are known, which may be the biggest outstanding, or the early retirement amounts are known, then council could get into some serious discussions with some real numbers. But that's not the case. The case is, it's all been, become political, going to the later meeting today, which is the discussion about tax increases. So, once again, you're going to talk about a budget. I think at least, what was talked about at the budget meeting should be acknowledged that these are really swags, I think is the technical term, that there are huge estimates in here, and the estimates aren't plus or minus, they're only minus. There is enough money in that, 8 to 12%, to fund the library and probably most of the road issue, too. Thank you.
And Mr. Dan Brake?
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to focus on a very technical issue. It's one more in a long list of violations of the law that I've iterated here for you before. Let me start with Chapter 9, Paragraph 7 of Troy's City Code. It's titled Budget Estimates. Not later than February 15th of each year, the Library Advisory Board shall furnish the city manager with recommendations regarding proposed library programs for the ensuing fiscal year, which the manager shall review and consider in preparing the library budget to be submitted to the city council. The budget shall be reviewed by the board prior to submission to the city council. And because of the February 15th date, I, for the first time in my life, attempted to attend the February Library Board Meeting, only to find that that meeting had been canceled. There was no February Board Meeting, ostensibly for the lack of a quorum. So, last Thursday night was the next opportunity I had to get back, and I attended. And in fact, during the public comment portion of the meeting, I spoke, and I pointed out what I just read for you. I was told, as I already knew in advance, that the library board had received directions not to submit a budget recommendation this year. Now, four of you, a year ago, intervened in the budget process to take away the budget that had been allocated for the library's operation for the year currently ending. That was your prerogative. But this year, to find that your city administration actually intervened in the process that the city has set out in its laws for preparing a budget, is just, to me, reprehensible. How in the world can you possibly explain directing the library board not to submit a budget recommendation, and then completing the budget process without any input whatsoever from that body that by our own laws is required to do so? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak in public hearing. Some of you have signed up under the public comment section, which we'll get to. Is there anyone else on public, during this public hearing section, that wants to speak about the budget? Yes, ma'am. Would you come forward?
Good evening. I just wanted to know, a question I've asked you a couple of times, and that is, in your State of the City address at the beginning of last year, you said that there were about 75 new business ventures that were either coming into Troy or expanding their operations here in Troy. Where is that tax revenue from those entities? And did you tell them that you were going to be fighting tooth and nail to increase our mileage rate when they first decided to sign on to come into Troy? Why aren't you spending your intellectual capital on finding ways to reduce the burdens to our entrepreneurs? Why aren't you demanding the implementation of the reorganization strategy put forth by ICMA? Why aren't you telling us about these new changes made to the master plan that might attract alternative businesses that Mr. Zerling pointed out in his letter? Why aren't you working to reduce red tape and regulations so we can attract new business? I'll tell you why you aren't doing any of these things, because you're still angry at the citizenry, because we didn't make your job any easier by lining your coffers with yet more of our hard-earned and scarce dollars. You have taken your threat to the gambit. You're holding our library hostage. We're now playing chicken with our futures and our pocketbooks, and you refuse to admit that you were wrong, that money is available to fund our library. And you cannot admit that you are operating on faulty ideology that believes we can tax ourselves into prosperity. It has never worked before. It will never work now. It will never work in the future, and we desperately need new management in this town before we scare the people in raising taxes, especially our commercial friends and neighbors, to the detriment of us all. Keep the library open with no new taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else is here on the public hearing, the budget portion? Remember, we're going to have another section on public comment. Chris, are you here on the budget? Come forward.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Wanted to open with a suggestion. From what I've noticed of the previous meetings that I attended, the public comments in this current format are very often used for primarily two purposes. One is groundstanding. The other one is attacking the council members and TCU. And I wanted to suggest that maybe you can look at changing the format, where the public would be able to ask questions and receive answers in the same time. I don't know how that could be done, maybe by extending the time limits for each individual, or asking people to submit questions online, and we take some more time for answers. Otherwise, it seems a little pointless. So, that's, having said that, that's my bit of groundstanding. Regarding the budget, I went through the numbers as well as I could from the website, and from what I can make it, the library budget is about 4%, or just under 4% of the total city budget. So, I just wanted to reiterate what a segment of our city have been saying. Please try to fund the library without any additional taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing. Return it to the council table for a resolution. Councilman Howerlech?
Whereas, Section 8.3 of the City Charter directs the city council to adopt a budget for the ensuing year, beginning July 1, 2011. Now therefore, be it resolved that the following listed reappropriations, operating transfers in, and operating revenues of the general fund are anticipated. Taxes, $30,163,000. Licenses and permits, $1,500,200. Federal grants, $12,000. Stake grants, $5,302,300. Contributions, local, $115,000. Charges for services, $6,060,300. Fines and forfeitures, $1,132,000. Interest and rents, $1,074,340. Other revenues, $695,500. Operating transfers in, $6,551,750. Reappropriation, $4,245,131. Total, $56,851,521. And be it further resolved that the tax rate for the general operating fund shall be 6.51 mil for the 2011 taxable valuation. And be it further resolved, in order to meet anticipated expenditures, amounts from the following listed budgetary centers shall be appropriated from the general operating fund. Building inspection, $1,198,913. Council and executive administration- Council and executive administration: $2,262,518. Engineering: $3,732,709. Fire, excuse me, finance: $3,732,709. Fire: $4,214,198. Library and museum: $2,430,510. Other general government: $1,806,893. Police: $27,873,319. Parks and recreation: $6,81,412. Streets: $5,301,924. Total: $56,851,521. And be it further resolved that the following listed reappropriations and revenues of the capital fund are anticipated. Taxes: $1,146,100. Federal grants: $6,591,000. State grants: $9,587,500. Contributions local: $200,000. Charges for services: $288,000. Fines and forfeitures: $220,000. Interest and rents: $127,200. Operating transfers in: $1,100,000. Reappropriation: $6,93,110. Total: $25,352,910. And be it further resolved that the tax rate for the capital fund shall be one and fifty three hundredths mil in the 2011 taxable valuation. And be it further resolved, in order to meet anticipated expenses, amounts for the following listed budgetary centers shall be appropriated from the capital fund. Executive administration: $50,000. Drains: $2,610,580. Fire: $1,265,000. Libraryary: $325,000. Museum: $50,000. Other general governments: $10,73,300. Police: $567,600. Parks and recreation: $139,000. Streets: $7,728,000. Public works: $960,000. Operating transfers out: $1,584,430. Total: $25,352,910. And be it further resolved that the following listed revenues of the refuse fund are anticipated. Taxes: $4,140,180. Charges for services: $4,500. Interest and rents: $8,000. Total: $4,152,680. And be it further resolved that the tax rate for the refuse fund shall be nine ninety-six one hundredths mil on the 2011 taxable valuation. And be it further resolved that the refuse fund shall be appropriated, $4,152,680. Be it further resolved that the general debt service fund shall be appropriated, $3,128,200. And be it further resolved that there should be a tax levy of fifty one hundredths mil on the 2011 taxable valuation for the general debt service fund. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the following budgets as shown on the 2011-2012 budget document. Major road fund: $3,066,930. Local road fund: $1,662,800. Community development block grant: $173,970. Budget stabilization fund: $305,000. Two thousand MTF debt fund: $237,020. Proposal A debt fund: $834,200. Proposal B debt fund: $1,472,700. Proposal C debt fund: $746,800. Special assessment fund: $356,000. Water supply system: $19,211,540. Sanitary sewer fund: $13,244,354. Aquatic center fund: $611,440. Sylvan Glen Golf Course Fund: $1,881,980. Sanctuary Lake Golf Course Fund: $2,110,161. Building operations: $935,800. Information technology fund: $1,715,530. Fleet maintenance fund: $6,33,133. Workers' compensation fund: $200,000. Compensated absences fund: $3,360,000. And unemployment insurance fund: $325,000.
Support?
Moved by Councilman Howelak, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that the council adopt the budget as read. Discussion, as some of you were looking perplexed at your agendas and wondering where these numbers are coming from. They're not coming from the majority of us. They are coming from Councilman Howelak, seconded by Councilman Fleming, and they are different numbers than what is proposed in your agenda. Mayor Protem Curwen asks for the floor next.
Point of order.
Mayor Protem.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilman Howelak?
I believe, and I would like a parliamentary ruling on this, that the maker of a motion is able to actually speak prior to discussion on the motion, to explain his motion. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Mrs. Bartholomew?
That is my understanding.
Yes. Councilman Howelak?
Yeah, I just wanted, for the sake of conversation, so that I could summarize the differences in a resolution for the audience and for my colleagues here at the table. What I did was, I took the second resolution, which I believe is Resolution B, and then I, and what I did was, I kept the, going through, excuse me, we'll just, I can go through Resolution A, because that's where my notes are. So if you, if you look at Resolution A, the contributions local has an additional $100,000 consistent with Resolution B, which is, Resolution B, it's my understanding, is a three-month library resolution. Fines and forfeitures have $80,000 added to it. Reappropriation has $2,080,000 added to it. Therefore, the total at the bottom has $2,260,000 added to it. Similarly, in the next section, library and museum has $2,260,000 added to it. Total has the addition as well. Furthermore, in the capital section on the next page, we have an additional $325,000 in the reappropriation, and then an additional $325,000 under the summary of expenditures in the capital fund. Those were the numerical modifications. I removed references to fiscal years 2013 and 2014. And the reason for that is because I believe that we need to have a separate resolution for the, for the front-year budget and the back-two-years budget. It is my belief that we need to actually have more in-depth conversation about the back-two-years budgets. Additionally, I believe also that we need to have full funding for the entire year for the library and the front-years budget. I also believe that if there's going to be a mill levy request, that it should be in November, and that it should be a general fund request. This resolution will remove any question as to whether or not that general fund mill levy will go to the, to the library. So that's why I put this resolution out there.
Further discussion? Mayor Protem Curwen, you ask for a far second?
I did, for Councilmember Howelak. Read all the numbers really well. Just if you would.
Use your mic.
Could read once more the engineering. I may have misheard, I see what the number is, but if you would read it one more time, then we'd have that ascertained. This is on your first page, engineering.
$1,949, excuse me, $1,949,125. I believe my eyes jumped a line when I was reading this before.
Okay, I just wanted to have that clear. Thank you.
Sure.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Councilman Fleming, have you seen this document before tonight?
Yes, it was emailed to me this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
About 5:30, I think.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Did others receive it as well, then?
No, first I've seen it.
And for Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I, as you know, I suggested last week that we have a three-year budget that showed library funding going, and we, more or less by consensus, rejected that idea. I appreciate this effort. I would like to postpone this motion until some later point in the meeting, so that we can digest it and think about it a little bit, listen to some public comment, and then move forward, one way or another.
Mayor?
Further discussion on the motion? Councilman Howelak?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to the idea of taking the budget, the three-year budget in two pieces. And the reason why is, we need to approve the first-year, 2011-2012 budget, we need to do it this evening. We should, as a policy, and we've decided that we wanted to have a multi-year budget. But I believe that we need to put more effort into it. And we have a number of questions that are outstanding there with respect to a number of different things, such as concessions, personnel funding in the police department at the end of the three-year budget, and 67 pages of material here that we got this afternoon, and some of the questions that I believe are still unresolved, that were discussed at last week's meeting. And I'd be more than happy to go through discussions about fund balance utilization and other communities and what they're doing, and so on and so forth. But I believe that this is a good, a good budget, for the most part. I have a number of different things, areas where I would prefer that we make modifications to it, but I think if we are going to have a compromise, that this budget is one piece of it, and the other piece perhaps is later in the meeting.
I think that postponing the presented budget that is in the agenda would be appropriate until after we've had the discussion and the motions about the library. However, I would not be in favor of postponing this motion by Councilman Howelak and supported by Councilman Fleming, because I think it is ill-conceived, and therefore, I would not, I'd want to dispense with this resolution. Further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I think it, I don't agree with that. I think we should leave this on the table and come back to it later. I don't think we should dispense of this so quickly without evaluating it more. I saw this, I think, probably, I don't know, 5:30 or 6 o'clock by email today, for the first time, but I think it has merit, and we should, we shouldn't dispense with it right away, we should leave it on the table and come back to it.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Madam.
Councilman Howelak?
I'll defer to Councilwoman Beltrameen.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I'll make the motion. I will make the motion that we postpone this until after public comment and the break.
Support?
You don't want to postpone till after the.
We can repostone it, but I think we at least need to have the break to collect our own minds and public comment, hear from the public, because they have also been given this budget on the fly tonight, and some of them may have a comment about that. And so to dismiss not only a colleague, but the public, out of hand, I think is ill-conceived itself.
I don't know that anyone in the audience, I don't know that anyone in the audience received a printed copy of this this evening. Did any of you receive a printed copy of this before tonight? That we'll admit to it? Okay, thank you. The vote on the postponement, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Curwen?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item is postponed. Next, we'll go to, do you want to have a resolution on the table with the agenda, the budget that is in the agenda at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem Curwen?
I have a question for the clerk. Might one of those that is posted be substituted, should this other motion not be successful?
Currently, the matter has been postponed, so at this point in time, you could not substitute it until after that action has occurred. So at this point in time, unless you rescind that motion.
The resolution for the change was postponed.
Correct. So you cannot make a motion to substitute at this time unless you rescinded the last motion.
My question is, later on in the meeting, should this not be successful, might one that is posted on the agenda be substituted?
Absolutely, yes.
That's the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to public comment, and I move to, we have more than 25 people that signed up, so I'll move to suspend the rules, to change it to three minutes, from five minutes to three minutes.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Curwen, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Curwen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. I move to change the time limit on public comment from five minutes to three minutes due to the number of people that have signed up to speak, and pursuant to our Rules of Procedure, Article 16.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, how many people do we have signed up?
Oh, let me count again, let's see. One time I counted there were 21. One, two, three, four, five, 21.
21.
I have 22, 23. Our limit is 15, without suspending the rules. They vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the changing the time limit?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Howelak?
No.
Curwen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. In the public comment section, you folks will have three minutes to speak, and I will call the first five, ask you to line up at the microphone. Bruce Bloomingdale, Marvin Reinhardt, Mary Mason, Richard Peters, and John Vert. Would those five people come up in that order? Thank you. Mr. Bloomingdale?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am elated to see Items I-IV and I-IVA in tonight's agenda. It is my sincere hope and desire that all seven of you will vote for, support, and actively promote these two resolutions. Your unanimous approval will go a long way in restoring public confidence in each of you as a city council member. A unanimous vote will demonstrate your ability to develop consensus while working to develop solutions to the challenges that still face us as a city. Approving these two resolutions will put this issue in the hands of the voters, exactly where it should be. I am confident that with your unanimous support and full promotion, combined with the efforts of the Friends of the Library, both of these ballot proposals will pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I give my extra two minutes on the next meeting's three minutes?
No.
No?
The new meeting, sorry. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Why don't I just, adjust the mic?
Madam Mayor, no matter what I say about this mayor, this mayor has been put through the wringer. the wringer. She's handicapped by many duties that only, in a city manager system that she can control. And you know she and I had a little disagreement a while ago. The thing I want to congratulate is our fire department. Our fire department was called the Bloomfield, that a guest builds buildings they can't put out because they need our guys over there to put them out for them. And they said the fire, they had no suspicion that a ten thousand square foot house burned in Bloomfield, no idea, though they combined the township, fire department, and Bloomfield already because of budgetary problems. They rely on Troy. Then we had a fire less than twenty hours later at Allied Metals, and they said that fire was because that business did not pick up its trash, okay? Now the reason we need a mayor instead of a city council. The same thing happened in Warren, but when a fire happens in Warren, the mayor calls the FBI arson agents in there, they find out what caused the fire, and he sues the people for emotional and financial damages to Warren and the victims of that city. So I don't see nowhere in the budget do we recuperate money from these people purposely burning down buildings in this city. You know why? They can always go to you guys, and you guys are going to give them more money. I know they need that sixty bucks, all right? Then we have in the newspaper, "City Staff Shrinks Again." And look, underneath it, it says, "Simply Divine." If we need the money, why does a newspaper go around giving out stuff like this? Then we have a thing called "City Councils Don't Trust Us." What article have I seen in the newspaper that would make us trust you people? I'm just asking. But I'm sure you need sixty bucks. Then we get the proposal "Transit Center Block." You read in there, Troy never needed Birmingham. They never needed them, we're going to do it ourselves. So the last three or four years, us arguing about whether we're going to work with Birmingham or not, was a complete waste of money. Understand how much Troy has? Troy has so much money, they could continually waste it because we're not going to recoup none of this money. Then we got increased eighty dollars a year in water bills. And at the end of the article, it says the water bill is supposed to be higher, but the budget's going to cover the rest. Hey, that's our tax money in the budget. Why don't you get like the senior citizens, we got to pay for that building, all the expenses. So why don't the people using water in this city pay for it? Because they don't. You got unwatered meters on the golf courses, so even though it's done by somebody else, they don't know how much water they use because this city is super rich. They got money in one budget, they put it in another budget, they throw it over there, and nobody knows where the money is, but don't worry, vote them more sixty dollars because that's all it is. But whoops, that one point nine, now they say they need snow removal. What else are they going to need?
Reinhardt, your three minutes are up.
Oh, it's okay.
Mister, uh, miss, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Mary Mason?
Good evening. My name is Mary Mason, I've been a resident of Troy for over twenty-five years. I taught in the Troy school system for fourteen years, and I'm currently teaching at the Oakland Intermediate School District, teaching teachers in Troy and other twenty-seven districts. I'd like to say that in city government, we elect ordinary citizens, just like you, to sit on our city council. The citizens on a city council do not usually come from a government background. You have various professional backgrounds that you bring to help govern our city. You seek a leader to lead you because you do not necessarily have a background in city governance, and so you hire a city manager, who is very schooled, who is very educated and very experienced in giving you advice and guidance to help you. Most people don't know this, but I know from working with school boards, you go out and you read professional literature, you attend seminars, webinars, professional conferences, all so that you can gain more knowledge on how to govern a city, which oftentimes you didn't come in with a lot of background knowledge. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to do something that you probably haven't heard a lot of. Thank you for your due diligence. I'm sixty-four years old, and I've lived through wars, several recessions, and economic trials, but nothing has occurred in my lifetime like the perfect economic storm that has happened in recent years. We have little history or precedent to guide us in the decisions that we have to make in schools and in government. You are elected officials in a city that historically been stellar in providing the foundational elements of a vibrant city: schools, safety, services. But the perfect storm has hit us all. The perfect storm took away jobs, housing values, foreclosures, tax revenue, businesses. In my knowledge, you have tried everything you know how to do to address these issues. You tried having a millage. It was voted down, partially because of an ill-informed citizens group that promoted erroneous information. Another citizens group tried to have it for the library, again, voted down, again, some of the influencing being non-factual information. You sought every avenue you knew to reduce expenses. You had a reduction in the city workforce, a reduction in pay, a reduction in pension, benefits, city services. You looked to outside experts in the field of city governance and services to say, "Did we make the right choices?" You listened to their opinions, and you were applauded on many levels by what you did do with your limited resources. You gave weeks of your time holding citizen forums to hear what myself and other citizens had to say.
Excuse me, I'm going to say something, Mrs. Dombrowski, it's not your, it's not your job. Ma'am, we have a three-minute limit, so I have to cut you off. Our buzzer is not working, usually there's a buzzer with it, the time goes out. Thank you, thank you.
I had more to say, but I will defer and say again, thank you, and as citizens of Troy, we need to honor the people.
Ma'am, you have to also address the chair, not the audience. That's the other rule we have. Mr. Peters, would you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, folks of Troy. I just want, last week, I don't support terrorism, and I think Israel has a right to exist with the State of Palestine.
Mr. Peters, talk, talk in the mic, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. About the library, these, if, if you think knowledge is expensive, we'll try ignorance, and I want to talk about, a little bit about the environment tonight. And also, I'm sick hearing of this heedless self-interest power economy talk when in fact mostly causes of energy and, and military expenditures right now, and the money going to the wealthy. But I want to talk about like the mountaintops of West Virginia that are being wiped out right now, and oil drilling in the Arctic, which is a knee-jerk reaction to, I think, to what the energy crisis is. In fact, I'd rather see sugarcane being grown in Florida to the tip of Texas. I'd like to see alcohol, which is natural to, to the Appalachia area, and also industrial hemp being grown as well. And I also want to reconfirm, three policemen, I'd like to see rehired with a animal control. And I also would like to say that we confirm Thomas Jefferson's "Life, Liberty, and the Pursuit of Happiness" for all Americans, and that's their birthright, and I would hope that America would get back to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Before Mr. Vert speaks, I'm going to call the next five people if they would come behind Mr. Vert, please. Joe Delanco, Sam Rashkensky, Gordon Shepke, Mary Ann Bernardi, and Aaron Stahl. If those five people would come up next, please, in that order. Okay, Mr. Vert?
I promised Councilwoman Beltrameen a long time ago that I'd quit coming to these meetings and making a fool of myself, and I keep getting dragged back in here. I think that we need a millage to save the library. I'm very naive, I bleed people when they, when they tell me that we don't have the money in the budget. I don't, I have a problem with people who say that they think there's money somewhere and haven't done their homework, haven't shown us anything, or waited last night. I firmly believe that Mr. Howelak's doing that because Mr. Howelak has, we had a discussion, and this was a public discussion, about him being mayor, and I firmly believe that he wants to be mayor and he will do anything. He said that he will, will not be mayor if this library issue is put to bed, and I think he will do anything to make sure that the library issue isn't put to bed. Now, that's a personal feeling, okay? But in the meantime, I don't think point seven was enough for the library, I think we ought to go ahead and do it right. And we, and we don't need a full mill, everyone has to take a cut. The full mill would give the library what it was taking about three years ago, but you could do point nine or point eight-five, somewhere in those numbers, and that would be a real compromise. The compromise you did now is just throwing, you know, you're still going to keep us with a part-time library. I think the citizens of Troy deserve a full-time library. I, I don't understand who you think, who you're compromising with. The vote was still five-two, the vote is always five-two. So there was no compromise, there was no compromise there at all. There's no, no compromise. Councilwoman McGinnis, she talked to Mr. Howelak about a compromise several, a couple months ago during a, a budget meeting, and he almost took her head off, and there she is saying, "Nice compromise, we got a nice compromise going." Did you not learn anything from what he said to you? There's no compromise. He will not compromise. He is not going to allow this city, if he can help it, to have any taxes. It's that simple. That's where the man stands. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Joe Delanco.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess mine's like a process-type question because I'm, I'm very confused over the process. And, and here's where I'm coming from. February of ten, we had a millage proposal election that was voted down. There was some talk in there about library, and there were other things, but then in November of ten, there was again four proposals about the library, and if I'm not mistaken, they were all voted down. Now we're going to propose again to put it on the ballot again. My, my question is, when does it stop? If they would have voted in favor, would we be talking about another proposal on to vote it down? It seems to me that the people have spoken, and it's unfortunate, but it was, those were the proposals, that was what the public voted on. It was voted down, no, but yet we're hearing again, we're going to put it on the proposal, we're going to put it on the ballot again to ask the question. So if it doesn't pass this time, if it's put on there, what do we do? Do we vote it on again? I seem to recall going back several years, probably back to late eighties, it was very similar with the high school, and I might have my figures wrong, but I seem to recall voting, or there were several votes where it was turned down, one or two or three times, until it kept coming back, until it was voted in. So I'm confused over the process. At what point does it end? Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Sam Rashkencowski.
Yes.
Do you want to, would you adjust the microphone down for you, sir? Thank you.
If there is no money for the library in the new budget year, the library should be closed. The sooner the library closes, the sooner it will be open. I see there is no, you have to finish one cycle to begin the other, and I see no point to raise tax, to raise taxes and to do anything. The only thing what you have to do is to reduce taxes for the new businesses to come in, like give some kind of incentives, then money will be automatically generated for the library. So there is, again, if there is no money for the library, close it. The sooner we close it, the sooner you will open it. That's it. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Gordon Shepke. Mr. Shepke?
Yes, my name's Gordon Shepke, forty-one years in Troy. You know, leadership and trust are the, really the elements that bind a city together. It's, it's the glue that holds us together in, in, for the common good, and this administration and the majority of this council, I don't think have been up to that challenge. You know, first of all, we're, we're taking a transit center that nobody in Troy needs, and we're willing to fund that even if Birmingham drops out, but we're not willing to keep our library open, which makes no sense at all. Second of all, I brought up last time about the Downtown Development Authority. A lot of people might not understand what the Downtown Development Authority is. It's an authority or board set up by the city to help, help the businesses on Sixteen Mile Road, that's my understanding at least. And from what I understand, the mayor appoints the members of that board with the approval of council. And over the last eight years that the mayor's been in office, this board has totally run wild, in my opinion, with its spending on a lot of glitz and glamour things that really haven't, that the city not only can't afford, but really don't materially help the, the so-called downtown section of Troy. On, on top of that, I've been trying to investigate a little bit more, and in the last year, I only see minutes for four meetings, and I, Madam Mayor, I didn't even see you in attendance on those meetings. You're supposed to be our voice, and I don't know if, if I'm not looking upright, I'm not a big computer person, but, you know, you're supposed to be our voice on that and try to bring reason within that group. But I think this group needs to be defunded so that we can't have a lot of new spending going on. It's just like that two-and-a-half million dollar park over in Rochester and Sixteen Mile, that thing is hard, isn't accessible for parking, it's just money that could be turned back into the general fund. We don't, we need to stop the flow of water out of the dam of limited resources before we start slashing this or slashing that. We have to stop the bleeding first, and I think you guys are going to have to, like White Fleming and Martin Howelak said, you were, we're going to have to go over this thing real seriously, take your jobs more seriously, go over this budget. There's too many guesstimates in this five-year plan, you've never done it before. It needs to be gone over very seriously and stop the bleeding before, and stop some of these outrageous spending habits right now. And that's my opinion, thank you.
Before, before, Mary Ann, before you start speaking, let me call the next five. Aaron Stahl? Janice Daniels? Ray Watts? Gerard Steger? Toby Goslin? Will those people come up in that order, please? Thank you. Mrs. Bernardi?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for voting to take time to consider Councilman Howelak's proposed budget. It has been very difficult to find a ray of light in these very depressing times when all it seems that we hear and have been hearing is hateful, attacking rhetoric, which we have continued to hear tonight. Nothing could be more disappointing, more disturbing, more depressing than that. You know, I don't really know still how I would vote if that does go in the ballot, so I can't wait to hear people calling me TCU and starting attacking. That's all they seem to know what to do. And it's, I've just never, I just, it's kind of changed my feelings about everything. I can't, I didn't think we had people like that in Troy, but we see that coming every single meeting. And as far as Councilman Howelak wanting to be mayor, if anyone would want to be mayor after what he has been put through, please. All right, seeing the two sides of council tonight beginning to work together, to respect each other, and to listen to one another, this does start to give me some new hopes, so I do so much appreciate that. And I appreciate Councilman Howelak's effort, and I hope that you will consider it carefully. This is not what I came here to talk about. What I came here to talk about is to object to the budget submitted by Automation Alley. They are asking for two hundred thousand dollars from the Smart Zone, and although that money cannot be used by the city for our general operations, it could be used for road improvements within Automation Alley's district. It might even be able to be used for roads outside of its own district. Not seizing an opportunity to improve our roads would represent a total disregard for the, for the priorities held by Troy residents. How many times have studies and surveys resulted in residents telling you that roads are one of their top priorities? The two hundred thousand dollars should stay in the Smart Zone and be allocated for road repair and improvement. Once money is transferred to Automation Alley, transparency is lost because as a nonprofit, there is no mandate for the Open Meetings Act or for the Freedom of Information Act. The money should stay in the Smart Zone where it can be more easily tracked and where it should be used on roads. And one more impromptu comment, I was, I just wanted to comment about the August election. That I don't understand, I don't understand the... I don't understand the logic of that. When we have paid someone $22,000 and this man tells us that a proposal would be defeated in August, why are we doing this? And then we would have to pay another $92,000 for that election. That just escapes me. I don't see any logic in that. And also, I see that, understand that people will be out of town in August. So why are we going for August when we can have more of the voice of the people in November and we've paid an expert who tells us not to go that way? Thank you.
Next, is Aaron Stahl not here? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janice Daniels.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say that I think it's healthy that we come before you and speak our minds. That's what a representative republic is all about. And yeah, maybe the name-calling could be lessened a little bit, but I'm enjoying this, and I think it's a healthy sign that we are a city that is ahead of the pack because we allow this open dialogue and we have this vigorous conversation. That said, I still think it's scandalous that you would demand another millage increase when there's still so much work left to be done to cut the size and scope of city government. We just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars last month for the ICMA report that will help us to restructure our government, and before we have time to even implement the recommendations, you're going to try to get another tax increase out of us? And you call this a compromise? There were two sides. There were people that said, "No new taxes because the money is already in the budget that you can use to keep our library open, at least for a year, so we can reorganize things." And the other side said, "We'll give you our tax dollars because you asked for it." And you call a tax increase a compromise? I don't get it. A true compromise would have been for you to have admitted that there's money in the budget to fund the library for at least one year while we take the time to restructure our government. It's scandalous to me that you would do anything other than that. I read Mr. Zerlig's letter of explanation of methodology for assessment projections dated May 10, 2011, and I want to thank you, Mr. Zerlig, for that very well-written and very informative letter. In that letter, Mr. Zerlig states that "The commercial class of property in Troy continues to take enormous reductions in value, both from its high vacancy rate and the dramatically reduced rental rates these properties can command with a limited tenant base to attract." He goes on to say, "The industrial class of properties is probably suffering the most with a vacancy rate of almost 30 percent, which will probably end up higher than that unless we are able to attract alternate businesses to these buildings with the changes to the master plan that apparently has just been adopted," although we haven't heard anything about that. He continues by saying, "Rental rates on some properties are at $2 per square foot, only enough to cover expenses. Tenants are requesting gross leases which dictate fixed expenses for them and leave the landlord to absorb all increases in expenses. These combined to make this type of property a poor investment, which reduces the market value. Many of the buildings are being given back to the banks, which forces even lower sales of these properties for their competition." All of that said, and you think the solution to our city's problems is to raise the millage rate? Are we stuck on stupid here or something? The last thing our commercial and industrial properties need at a time like this is a millage increase.
Thank you.
I had more, but I'm done.
Next speaker is Ray Watts.
Mayor Shilling, council members, persons, and city officials, I appreciate your time and efforts on behalf of the City of Troy. I've only started attending meetings in the past several months. I've attended a lot of meetings and talked to a lot of people on both sides of the library issue. And I've looked at present and past city budgets to the best of my numbers' ability. And I'm in favor of keeping the library open. But with the conversations I've had, the meetings I've attended, I come down on the side of believing that we can keep the library open with existing city monies without new taxes. A special election for a millage is, seems to be unnecessary and a waste of taxpayer monies. I would like to see council exercise its fiduciary responsibility to handle our money with great care and direct city management to do the same. A special election that costs around $90,000 is more than the average income of our households in the City of Troy. That seems to me to be a waste of money. I'm convinced that if city council would vote to keep the library open and the streets clear when necessary, that city management would find a creative and productive way to do that. As Brooks Patterson directed certain departments in our county government to reduce their spending, they've been able to manage the budget, and I'm told that they actually probably will have a surplus because things are beginning to turn around. So I again encourage you to vote to keep the library open, to direct city management to find that creative and productive way to do that. And I'm convinced if you told them to do it, they would do it. They're good. They have the ways to do that and do it in a very positive way. I was also happy to hear Councilman Howelak's presentation of a budget, and I've been hoping that together, city council would do that. Present your budget, their budget, along with city management. Lay them beside each other, pick the good parts, and put them together, and come up with a unified budget. I encourage you to consider his budget, the other budget, and let's do the right thing for the citizens of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gerard Stager not here? Okay. Is this Toby? Toby Goslin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and administrators. Thank you for doing the people's work. I see progress, and it is refreshing. It's amazing we have differences of opinions, but it's nice to have the opportunity to come and present our thoughts and our concerns. My name is Toby Goslin. I'm an educated Troy voter, involved, and looking forward to voting yes on the proposed dedicated millage. I pay attention to the details and understand the urgency of the upcoming election. My yes vote represents the future for the City of Troy. I'm the silent majority with appreciation for the city services. I present to you this evening a different perspective from what you've been hearing from the chest pounders and the toxic rage. We moved to Troy only three years ago. In the middle of the Great Recession, we sold our condo in White Lake. We methodically searched for a single-family home in a contemporary, full-service city close to work and family. We selected the City of Troy for the quality core services: police, fire, public works, the library, and the exemplary school system. They all mattered. We understand the economic crisis and the impact of falling property values and the reduced tax revenue. The core services, which provide for the common good, have been reduced to dangerous levels. While I hope the city manager is not the last man to turn out the lights in City Hall, city services are not free and must be funded by our property taxes. How will the road maintenance, the winter salt, snow plow service be funded? Is it going to be included in a dedicated millage request? Troy residents are intelligent and capable of understanding what is technically referred to as a bundled millage request. One simple yes-no dedicated millage I demise specifically for each of the core services: police, road maintenance, snow service, library, all the core services that matter to residents and future home buyers. With your unified leadership, we must hold community town hall information sessions, engage the local media, educate our neighborhood association boards to get the correct information to the voters. Tonight, we face the final opportunity to put an end to the war here in the City of Troy and move forward to save the library, police, fire service, road maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I forgot to call the next five. Paul Beck, David Ashland, Tasmine Hyken, James Savage, Christian Tadorness. Okay, Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. First of all, starting this budget process, you had an organizational chart put up on the screen in the small off room. And the process, or the photo, came up with the citizens on top, the second tier was you, the council, then a city manager, but I think we got that whole thing upside down. I think it's the city manager, the council, and then the people. Because we voted twice already that we didn't want a millage increase, and there are certain individuals on this council and the city manager think that we need an increase in our millage. Things are tough out there. Why make them tougher? The city manager, also in one of these meetings, sat there and said that he was going to get concessions from the unions and that he would have this information to us in the first part of May. Well, this is almost the middle of May, and I haven't heard one word about the union concessions as of yet. The other thing is that we're going to go forward with a transit center that we don't need. I want to know how much money we have spent already and how much money is going to cost the city residents to keep this transit center going. This is an unknown. We can't afford a public library, but we can afford a transit center that nobody knows if we'll even start because it's in litigation. And number three is that we can afford to redo a pond at $800,000 in your budget, but we can't afford to have a library. I'm totally opposed to any increase in millage. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from David Ashland.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm on a little micro level here, simply the millage, because I support the millage for a library. But I'd like to point out a couple of things. I've discussed this library situation with many of my fellow Troy residents, and most people now believe that the library is going to stay open. That's a feeling that I'm gathering that the citizens have. Most of the people to whom I've spoken believe that if a millage is approved, the library will remain open with the services that they have historically experienced. Services such as 65 hours of weekly operation, continuing additions to the collection, technology services, membership in a library co-op, mail service, and so on. I told many of these people that I don't think that's quite true, that the service levels will be fully restored either with the budget and the budget with a 0.7 millage. However, I really don't know what the service levels will be, what we can expect, even if a millage is approved. So I would like to see some simple data that would provide the following information. First, that wasn't my three minutes, was it?
No.
No.
Somebody needs to turn their cell phone off in here, please.
First, I'd like to see the baseline service levels for the items I mentioned previously. And I think that baseline level should be from the 2009, 2010 budget and level of operation. Second, we should compare the service levels today with that baseline. And thirdly, we should compare the projected service level if the millage is approved at the 0.7 level. Compare those to the 2009, 2010 baseline. Because residents should know in advance what service level they can expect if they vote for a millage. If residents are not informed in advance and do not receive the service level that they have experienced in recent years, as I think most of them would, then they're going to feel misled and deceived. Many will think, if they voted for the millage, why do they not have the full old service library? Now, what I've just said may all change. I have no idea what the budget will now be. We've got different budget alternatives. But based on the budget alternative that's approved, I believe a millage will still be needed, anywhere from maybe 0.4 to 0.9. And in any event, I think we need to tell the citizens what they can expect when all the dust settles. Now, I think Kathy Ruse would be in a good position to present some of these data, and I would like to see her do it at a council meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Tasmine is next.
I respect a mayor and council members. First, I want to thank all of you for all your efforts and all the hard work you've been putting in. I'm here representing, I'm a board member in the Troy Chamber of Commerce, and also I'm an 18-year resident of Troy with children who've gone through the school system. First of all, I wanted to congratulate and thank Ann Kamiski and the Troy Community Coalition for the stellar job they've done. Didn't realize what a tremendous job they've been doing until my son actually went to college and compared himself with other children out there and what they've been through in terms of drug and alcohol abuse, and thankful to know how protected our children are. I hope the community supports the coalition. TroyCoalition.org is their website. There were fundraisers coming up, Comedy for a Cause on June 5, and I hope they receive funding in the future.